Hi, for us to reconvene in our open session. And first, I have to thank our several recognitions. And our first is our LBUSD, the 2017 retirees. Then our first is. We're introducing our new employees.
Yes.
So.
Retired.
Actually, before we get started with our retire recognition, we'd like to recognize Dr. Michael Keller, who's here with his family. Would you like to come on up? So, Michael's been hired as our Director of Social Emotional Support. We're very glad to have him onboard. We're glad he could come and we'll let him introduce his family and say a few words.
Good evening. For President Vickers and esteemed members of board and Superintendent Valoria, Executive Cabinet, Community Members, Principals, Administrators, Teachers, Retirees. So happy to be here. My name is Michael Keller. But I'm your new Director of Social and Emotional Support, starting in July. I'm actually thrilled to have this opportunity. And I've committed my career to developing systems around supporting students' social emotional needs. I've been a school counselor, been a school psychologist, a special education leader, most recently in the Los Alamos Unified School District. And the common thread throughout all of that has been supporting the social emotional wellbeing of all students. So, really excited about this great opportunity. And I'm excited to be working with such a visionary board and a great, great team of passionate educators. And I'd like to take a break a moment to introduce my family. This is my wife, Allison. She's a school psychologist at Long Beach Unified School District. And this is my son, Owen. He's a fourth grader. And this is my daughter, Ainsley.
We're so just grateful to the board for your support. Dr. Keller will be an amazing asset to our district and a phenomenal addition to our department. We're really pleased to thank you for joining us.
I'm excited about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome to our district. And we've had received a lot of input that this is a merit we need to increase our attention to, to provide for our students. And so, we really are pleased to be that we're able to do this and able to add this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And more on the street is your rock star, so no question.
I'd like to introduce my brother-in-law, Ann Gola. She's a marriage therapist and amazing. She's been a mentor in my life, so.
Okay, so now, I am honored to help recognize and congratulate our staff who have retired or will be retiring at the end of this school year. We're privileged to recognize these dedicated members of our LBUSD family who have served us for so many years. These are staff members who dedicate many, who have dedicated many years to our organization and are knowledgeable about their responsibilities. They guide and mentor others and provide a sense of continuity and familiarity to our students and our families. We are truly fortunate to have such committed employees in our district. And it is an honor to recognize them for their service tonight and wish them the best as they move into the next chapter of their lives. So, first, please join me in recognizing Sherri David from El Moro. It's funny, her principal to come up and say a few words.
Oh, nice.
Did you say anything about being nice, Sherri? But all kidding aside, Sherri David, affectionately known as Miss Sherri to all of her students and parents at El Moro, has been working for 23 years in the Laguna Beach Unified School District.
I have? I'm sorry.
Yes, on the top of the world.
Oh, there you go.
Most in El Moro. And I've had, I've had the honor and pleasure of working with Sherri for the last 12 years. And it will seem strange not working with her next year. But a couple of things about Miss Sherri that I think we all would like to honor and recognize. And first of all, whatever I say here tonight will not be enough of a tribute to the contributions you've made to the kids in your classroom.
I thought you were saying you named anonymous or something.
Yeah. Okay. You know, Sherri is excited about teach, just as exciting about teaching right now as she was 12 years ago when I met her. And she never wastes a moment in the classroom. She always is planning what she's going to be doing. The kids are constantly interacting with her. She loves teaching them. She's a reading specialist, so that's a particular area where she loves to focus on. And to see her do reading groups with the kids and just turn on that light and that joy and love of reading for all the kids is just a wonderful thing to be able to observe. It's a tribute that she, there are students here who have been in Sherri's class. They heard that she was retiring. They stopped by. Her colleagues, teachers. I know that she's loved by the parents because she always communicates with them about what's going on in the classroom.
Only the good things.
Only the good things, yes. She, she keeps them informed of what's happening. I, I don't know if I would just say it's only the good. Everything that's going on, the parents feel informed. I think they always appreciate that. So, Sherri, congratulations on the job.
Support her. I have actually a trophy on my head. It's pretty cool. Oh, baby.
Thanks for your time.
Oh, Jason, I just love the honors from you. To receive this. Chris, I love you too. Very much. Thank you, everybody. Peace out.
Do you like to use?
Oh, yes.
All of this.
Correct you. Correct you. Who'd you like me to, my colleagues?
Well, with whoever's special for you.
Well, everybody in this room is special for me.
Comments from folks?
I want to know where you did.
I can't believe that Sherri.
I know, Dean, right? Ask Pete. I know. It's all good. And all, yeah. I wish you the best. Hey, no. You'll have such a good time. You bet. Bernie's here somewhere.
Ooh.
There you go. I just want to know where you get your dresses. Yeah, the last time we went to you at the car place, we're all like, where should I get the dresses? I'll tell you. I'll talk to you later. Do that. Anyway, I'm so privileged to have so many people here.
Sherri, I just want to say that, or I want to say about Sherri that.
Thank God I have the doctor.
Back when we were having some financial difficulties, Sherri came to many, many of our lots and lots of work meetings that year and had no qualms about telling us, you know, where we were going astray. And it was.
Did I say no?
But it was a good thing. That's a good thing. So, you know, you're willing to reach out beyond just what you do for your classroom and also because of the district, because that was a struggling time for us. And then, as a, as a teacher, I had a student in Sherri's class and the amount of time that she put into the reports for the conferences, they were like chapters out of books. And so, when you multiply that while it's in the class, an enormous amount of time to do those kind of things, that is stellar.
How's he doing?
Good.
Good. Thank you so much. That's so sweet. Very sweet. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. You bet. I want the dresses. That's it. Your husband's here. You bet.
She's going to have fun in retirement. So next, we'll have Mr. Duddy also join us to help recognize Kathy Witt, fourth grade teacher at.
Hard act to follow.
You say that's a hard act to follow, but really, yes, it is. But Kathy has been with our school district for 33 years. And I, you know what? I'm cracking up Kathy. I wish the folks at home could see, but you have your Birkenstocks on today. And we've worked together for 13 years and she always wears Birkenstocks. Sometimes with socks when it gets cold. See?
That's right.
And I wear a four-and-a-half double T, so fun upon fun.
Never seen Kathy in pumps, but I will, I will say, what I have seen Kathy do is be very passionate about educating kids in fourth grade at El Moro. And one of her specialties is science. So, if you've ever been to her classroom or you haven't had a chance to be in Kathy's classroom, there are snakes in the classroom. There's snake skins, which she tried to give away to the staff that nobody wanted because she got this huge snake skin that she's had for quite a while. But she's always been the resident science expert at El Moro. So, whenever there is a rattlesnake that might wander its way onto campus, we call Kathy, who used to have the trouble to set snake on it and saved the day with the, with, with the snake shovel. But she has a lot of fun. She's also, she also has a master's degree in technology. And they're laughing because this might be a little known fact, but I have to say, it has served you well as we have changed the ways of education and Kathy's been able to make that adjustment and incorporate technology into her classroom. And, you know, just today, we were talking about the writing online and giving the assessment. Text board, so. She's shown a great ability to adapt and change over those years and not be stuck in her ways and continue to learn and continue to have a positive impact on the students at El Moro. And she is also well-liked by all the students, all the parents and all of the teachers who are there.
And Jan signed my contract. Thank you so much. It's been a wonderful ride. Well, I would say that Kathy had, we used to call them, I don't know why they call them my tinnitus teachers, when we taught science at both campuses, because they had to move all their stuff. She was a science teacher for our district. And obviously, we've made a lot of progress. Yes, they had to have a little room. But sometimes I would get the stub in there, times when I wasn't on the board, and it was a lot of fun. But, and again, I have to say, since I had a child at El Moro, you guys were mostly TOW folks. And I, Kathy is really, really strong in teaching to the different learning styles of students. And for, since we have a local of teachers, you know how important that is. And again, it's stellar. Same as Sherri.
Thank you.
Really, really good. Thank you so much. And she's a local and. I brought my mother a class of 55.
She wants to take a picture. Come here, Chris.
Get it. One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you so much. So next up, I'll invite up Jenny Solberg, who will introduce Eleanor Tyner.
Okay, so Eleanor and I go way back, way, way back from when I was at the high school. We worked together there. We've known each other for a long time. And for me personally, she's one of the few people who have seen me grow as the principal I am today. Right? Wasn't always this great. So, seven years ago, I learned that Eleanor was going to be transferred to the middle school. That's great news for me and great news for Thurston after having served 15 years at the high school. Right? So, I first observed Eleanor's tireless, incredibly supportive efforts back when we were together at the high school and witnessed the positive difference that she makes with each and every student that she works with. She doesn't only help them academically. She was helping them long before socially emotionally was on the radar. So, one day, I was walking around doing my rounds at the high school and I get down by the track. I don't even know if you're going to remember this story.
Trying to splat.
Trying to splat. And she was literally falling behind, running at the edge of a bike as a senior boy is trying to learn how to ride the bike. And she's holding on the bike, running, sweating. I mean, everybody wanted to cheer. It's like, and it was just that one moment. Nobody else, this wasn't for anybody else other than this senior boy. And when he finally had the hang of it, as a senior boy learning to ride a bike, she let go and he was riding and she stood there and cheered and supported. And I was like a mess crying, because it was so amazing to see her. And I think just like any other parent who would have pride in his coordination accomplishment, riding a bike, Eleanor ran and ran and then finally let go to celebrate. The senior boy was riding a bike and I loved it. It was amazing. And that's a metaphor for who Eleanor is, right? She's always right beside her students. She's holding on to them and then she's letting go right when she needs to let go. That looked like a shot. I let go. That sincere approach to supporting all students is what made Eleanor so very successful at Thurston. She is tireless, she is genuine, and she is focused, and she is successful with her students. I can confidently say that any student that had the great fortune to work with Eleanor was a successful student. Eleanor, we're going to miss you for so many reasons that I hope you come back to say hello and I hope you come back and do our bulletin board. Because that's equally important.
Going to make you get a lot of stuff here in the bulletin board.
I just had a great friend and it's, it's been wonderful. I love everything about the school. I think Disneyland has, knows nothing. Thurston is the happiest place on earth. I mean, we have the greatest, greatest students, greatest staff, you know, greatest kids. It's just, it's wonderful place. One thing I don't like, looking up at 5:30. That's what I don't like. That's not too bad. And I'm finally going to join my husband in retirement, my husband, Peter. And my lovely daughter-in-law are here and my brother-in-law.
I, Jenny stole my thunder. Those bulletin boards have never looked so good. They come back and, you know, I know the hours, I've watched you, the hours that you put in with each student and it really is, it's remarkable. And the, the value add to their lives is palpable.
Yeah, I just love all the kids. Charles, the top to ride a bike, where we're going to continue to teach him how to swim because I'm a swim teacher. But he begs the groceries at Pavilios. I think you all know Charles. He's wonderful. He's a great guy, so it's a pleasure.
For me, what Jenny focused on is what lives, or when we were still at the high school. And it isn't just the students that you worked with. You had an ability to know things about other students and then to compliment them on it and know that that is important in a student's life to have someone acknowledge something that they've done. And I, you know, I experienced with my son personally, but it makes, that's who you are, your gentle soul, and it makes a huge difference.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, and last but not least, I'll introduce Mike Conlon, who will introduce and recognize Claudia Redfern.
That's not a surprise. It's no surprise. She's never short on words and.
I hope you're good.
They're always, and always, like I said, she's been the rock at TOW for many, many years. I mean, she's 32 years on campus and she has just, she is the pulse and she is the heart of TOW. And it would not be the school it is today without the role that you played in it. And just from the impact you've had on all of the people in the room, from the many retired teachers that were here to all the students that have come through. I think the, the one thing I always think about Claudia is she, she, you'll come in the office once and she, you're her best friend. She'll know everything about you. She could probably, and I'm sure she can do this, she could name five facts about every single person sitting in the chair right here. Something would not want to say in public, but she has, she, she, she knows everything. And again, it's, it's, it's a beautiful connection to the community because you just, you love and adore Laguna Beach.
I do.
And you take so much pride in TOW and your passion for the school and your passion for the students. It's, it, it comes through and like I said, it's, we could not, I could not do my job and the rest of us could not do our job without, without the work and the tireless effort that you put in.
You have to.
But she's not leaving the city, so she's, she's going to, she's going to be close. But like I said, I could tell for everybody, again, you are absolutely amazing and you've done so much for the school. Like I said, it's been the last three years working with you has been incredible. Like I said, and just you are, you are the heart. And like I said, the, the, the joke is, you know, she, she's the brain. Like I said, because she knows, she knows everything. She has a book called The Brain, so we're lucky that we have that in writing. So, most that's in there is now documented. But like I said, it's, it's going to take dozens of people to, to replace the, just the brain power and, 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 and the effort and just the work and dedication that you've put into TOW. So, thank you for all your years of service and we truly appreciate it.
It's a great place to be.
Yeah, so, and with that, I think you might have a few words to share.
The person called me this afternoon to pick my brain on, on people, so. And principals and how far they go back. Encyclopedia. Yeah, so anyway, if I can bore you all for just a few minutes.
No, just say no.
No? All right, well, I'll just start, okay. As you can well imagine, some of my best friendships have been formed at Top of the World School since I've been there for 32 years. I won't say how old I am. I'm only about 40, but that's. I will only introduce a couple of people as I go through my speech. And Toni Flores is the teacher to hire. I'm going to embarrass you, but you're, she's kind of like the Kathy Witt of El Moro. We find a snake. She'll go get the snake. She'll bring it to her classroom and she'll skin it and put it, nail it to a hole. Right?
Science class.
Yes. Where is she? It's a 40-minute lesson. Toni Flores is the one that I have to blame for this job. She said to me one day, school had already started, my youngest daughter was in fifth grade and she said, what are you going to do? You can't go to Thurston and be a helicopter mom, you know? You, why don't you come and get paid? You've already been there, done that. And so, I went home and talked to my husband and he said, so long as you're home at night? Because he traveled for a living as a pilot and I needed to be the constant. And so, there I was and here I am, so. Thanks, Toni.
You're welcome.
Yes, okay. She also said to me that I already, I knew all of the machines and I can relate to Sherri David. Where did Sherri go? All right. I knew how to run a ditto machine. I knew how to use a stencil cutter. I knew how to use a typewriter. You're looking at me because these are four. So, yeah. And I think that it's time for me to leave because I can't wrap my brain around beach port and haiku.
Roy's going to miss your daily.
I know. Roy here?
He's not.
Yeah, okay. So anyways, my daughters started their education, and this is part of the history of my life, at Laguna Beach Unified School District, Elisa School down at Wesley by the Montage. And Jan Vickers was back in my life back then because Carl Schwartz, who was our school board president, and Lyle Proctor, who was the principal that I was PTA president under, sent me off to Top of the World and that's where I, my children continued their education when they closed Elisa School. So, if Elisa was still open, you might not have met me.
Lucky man that.
Yeah. Man, the next person in my life that has made a huge difference is Diane Bridges. Because she subbed frequently for various reasons at, at El Moro. And she's been my friend and my rock for, I don't know, we did election at my house. We were both election officers years ago and my garage was a polling place. And so, Diane. So anyway, she and her husband have watched out over me after I became a widow, which, that doesn't always happen, so. Chris Hammerquist is not here this evening, but Chris was a very good replacement. And I'm hoping that we can find just as good of a replacement for me as they did for Diane. Next, Nancy and Dick Wade. And the invitation that I think Lisa Winston sent to me, she said, bring your family. I don't have any family around here. My one daughter lives in Connecticut and the other one lives in San Francisco. And so, Nancy and Dick Wade are the first people I met in Laguna Beach that I still know today. I mean, I met a lot of people 42, 43 years ago, but I did, wasn't, continued friendship then, so. I can invite the Wades to my house for leftovers and think I gave them. But anyway, and Nancy and Dick's son, Paul, went through Top of the World, Elisa, well, I'll start Elisa, Top of the World, Laguna Beach High School. And also Surf Company, great here in town. If anybody needs a boogie board or a scuba board, there you go. And I also have Margaret.
Margaret.
Yes. Margaret Arnold was an original teacher at Top of the World School and retired.
2012.
2012. Do the math. I can't do that math. Anyway, Margaret Arnold, thank you for encouraging me to live the good life by retiring. Talking about technology here, every night, if I turn on my iPad or something at 11:30 or whatever time I get to it, I keep getting these messages from Facebook that tell me I have 43 friends who want me to open it up and look and see what's there. I don't know about that. I'm not sure, but maybe I'll have time to look at and see if these 46. I don't know. So, and then everybody asks, when you retire, what are you going to do? What special trip are you going to take? So, yes, I do have several trips planned, but the one I'm most excited about right now is my trip to Iceland with my two daughters to celebrate my hmm-hmm birthday. And it happens to be, where's my friend Linda Barker? Linda Barker and I share the same birthday along with Princess Anne. My husband used to fly from LAX to Africa with a layover in Iceland and he always came home with fascinating stories to tell our two young daughters. And so, that's what, my one daughter, I'm going to tell you lots of stuff that you don't need to know tonight, but fell, broke her arm very severely during the Boston Marathon. So, she was home and not, didn't have things to do except for play on her iPad and she called me one day and she says, Mom, it's a big birthday. We're going to go to Ireland. And I said, okay, you plan the trip. I'm too busy right now. And so, tickets are bought and we're on our way, so. Bye.
Send me a postcard.
I will, I will. So anyway, oh, by the way, Mr. Conlon. I will not be reachable even by text. When the office opens in August, because that's where I will be.
Their vacation I made.
Okay. All right. I will be standing behind that double waterfall, enjoying the breathtaking views of the Iceland countryside. So, all right. I will miss you all and all the wonderful friendships I have made. It certainly does not feel like 32 years, but when I look back at all I have, all I have done in 32 years, I guess it's been a great ride, so. I guess it's been a great ride, so. It has been, almost every one of the school board members have had children come through Top of the World School and Dee's son came to Top of the World School before she abandoned us. I guess she talked to.
Did you teach at TOW?
She did.
Did you teach at TOW or just at El Moro?
No. I taught one of your daughters.
Did you?
I was not there.
You were De'amba then, so that was a different.
She's a nice teacher, Nathan.
Anyway, all my TOW friends, thank you for coming. Thank you, thank you.
Well, some of us were there.
Yeah, some of us were there, we loved it. Oh, I should, yeah.
Thank you.
Come back soon. What were you gonna do with all that information that I shared you with?
Just know it.
Oh, just know it.
Here, we are ready. One, two, three.
Thank you. I'll have to talk to you after this meeting. Well, can I tell an embarrassing story?
Oh, please. He knows, she knows a lot of things.
I don't have to say this. Is it okay?
Okay, sure.
Okay, Mike Conlon, school had started, we were probably September, Wednesday, whatever that was, the 6th of September. Okay.
I'm always worried when she starts talking about stories.
Okay, so Mr. Conlon says, come here, I need to see you for a minute. Okay, so I walk in his office, he closes the door behind him and I'm just, uh-oh. And he said, I just got a text message or whatever those new programs are from, from Dr. Valoria. And I said, yeah? And he said, well, he got email or something from you about not turning in that data confirmation.
Of course he did.
And I said.
Why is he so?
And I, I don't know, I was speechless. I didn't know what to say. I was told that I needed to contact every family who would not turn in.
Well, I turned it in, I thought.
Well, so keep that when it happens this year. We go looking for it. I never found it, sir.
I know. Probably sneeze in my head.
Well, no, no, I didn't break on it. So it's not in Ella's backpack, or the dog ate it, we hear that. Or it's not in Ella's backpack and then it didn't get from her backpack to the teacher's desk.
It's hard to trust a third grader.
Okay, or, or wait a minute, or it didn't get from the teacher's desk to my desk.
Yeah. There were a lot of steps.
So, um.
Could've just been in my car, but.
I didn't even clean out underneath the front seat. But I hope I didn't embarrass you.
No. So Claudia, I had to say, she's one of the first people actually I met when I came into the district way back when. And I'd heard these stories about Claudia.
She's infamous.
She is infamous. I mean, really, you're infamous. People know you all over. So I was coming in and I had mentioned, yeah, I'm moving into a friend of mine who his, her kids go to Top of the World. He said, well, you better have all your stuff together because Claudia's not gonna take it. So I knew when I walked in, I was rolling my. And then I leave out the data confirmation. So, you know, I got the privilege of being able to stop at Top of the World and see Claudia and check in when I walk in on campus. And she always smiles and I even offered him and said, let me buy you a new computer because that screen is so small. She says, leave it alone. I know I haven't changed at all. Because if it gets bigger, it gets harder to work on. So I'm just so appreciative of all the things that you do for our kids, my own kid as well. And my daughter has said that same thing. She's sad that you're leaving. She doesn't understand retirement. She thinks you just gotta wander off and disappear into the world. Next, like I know, you know, she's gonna go do fun things like travel, which is gonna be exactly what you deserve to do. So thank you for all your service.
Thank you all. I want to take your comment from the PTA moms. It is a known entity. When we're planning for something, we actually say this, you need a Claudia. And that is from any school, because we'll say what you did for all of us and our kids. You helped us. I was really scared of you when I first met you. Thank you. And then I became PTA president, we became fast friends and we worked hard. But I just will say, your name, oh, you need a Claudia. And it just means someone with a commitment, a strong work ethic, gets the job done, organized. I would so appreciate you for all the hundreds of kids you have helped to go through that.
Claudia, I have to say, I was afraid too. Well, because I didn't know things I probably shouldn't know.
Yeah.
And like I didn't know, I was just told, oh, you plan this field trip? And I thought, all right. And I didn't know we used like district buses. I called a lectures bus in Houston. The kids were all so surprised. It had, you know, the big full back seats. But I did get scolded for that.
Scolded or something?
No, I just said I should maybe ask one question.
Ask Claudia.
Ask Claudia.
I agree, it was better to ask.
Thank you for everything.
Yes, Claudia, I was afraid of you too. I had, I had enrolled my nephew in school and I knew nothing because I, he just showed up, you know, to go to school. And I walked in and you're like, do you have all your stuff? I don't know what stuff I have. And then the moment I said that, you know, it's military, they were moving, and you just hear, temperate you. Took me in. And then I came with my own kids years and years later and you're, you're still there? And I was like, I have you all over. Because I was like, there's something I don't have. I know there's something I don't have.
People don't want to make you.
We don't want to disappoint you.
Disappointed.
Yeah.
That's a huge thing.
You're so dedicated.
Well, I have a taskmaster, I'm sorry.
I know, he tells me all the time. You keep him in line is basically what it says, so I appreciate that.
I wasn't afraid of you.
Brown and myself, you know, saying.
Because I walked in and I was like, look, my house burned down and we're supposed to be going to school here and I'm not gonna go to school there because I moved back up here and you're like, that's fine. That's okay. And so I was not afraid of you. And I'm still not afraid of you. Because you have the heart that everyone should have for families, for kids, for parents. Everything we've been through, you've been there. I don't have.
I've been there with you too.
I don't have parents. And you, to any of you in particular, Diane. I have been so, to my family, to me, I could never, ever say thank you. And I mean that, you know, for the. So I'll do the best to you and the girls as you move forward. I will miss you. I know I'll see you, but.
Not at 5:30 in the morning when you're walking.
We can take some other time. But you, you're, you are the root that make this tree so, so special.
Thank you, thank you. We were reminiscing a little today about Eloise Dickerson. If anybody, if anybody remembers Eloise. Probably not. You know, no? You know Eloise Dickerson. Oh, my gosh. Yeah, anyway, Eloise always said, when she left and she would, she could, she could write a book. So hearing you tonight, that's what you need to do. You need to be a best seller. About all the goodness.
All it is, yep.
Thank you for your years of service. My first memory of Keta Brown was, well, no, I, my first happy, happy memories of Keta Brown. Annie, we would get boxes for her and Keta would come up to school to do whatever she would do. We'd put her in boxes and she'd crawl around inside the box and move it around, do like a little gerbil inside a box. And she'd entertain herself while her mom was listening, PTA president or whatever she did.
She was a really good parent.
We were in a box.
I won't tell any more stories.
I just want to say one thing. I feel privileged to be able to work with people like Sheri. And she was one of the first people that, when I introduced myself at El Moro, who made, was the only one who actually asked a question in the whole entire room at first. And I've always appreciated that because you ask the right questions, you support your staff, the people you work with. Same with Eleanor. I mean, every time I walk on a campus at Thurston, I can, whenever I see her, she's always smiling. The kids know it. They just, she is infectious when she's around. And Kathy, when I get to go into your rooms, it stinks, first off. And she mentions to me, like, when I walk into the room, she's, the kids always say, who's that guy in the back of the room standing in the suit? She always just keeps going, keeps teaching. And as Jan pointed out, there's always something going on in your room that's positive for kids. And so I just thank you and I'm not gonna go in any more detail because you're probably saying another story about me, but. You know, this is what, this is what this business is about, is people and students and doing what we think's best. And so I am just privileged to work with you, saddened to know that you guys are retiring, but know that you deserve to retire and do great things in retirement. So thank you for your years of service. Much appreciation.
Okay, we should just stop now. So thank you all for coming to support your fellow teachers. It really says what this business is about and I appreciate that and support. Thank you. Next, we are recognizing Community Coalition and Partnership and Prevention that, oh, that's Thurston.
Good evening. My name is Diana Lynn and I work with Mission Hospital and I'm here on behalf of the Laguna Beach Community Coalition. The Coalition works to prevent subsistence use and to support youth to have healthy relationships and strong community connections. Today, we'd like to honor Thurston Middle School with our first Partners in Prevention Award. Thurston dedicated an entire week to mental health awareness and stigma reduction with the goal of making it easier to talk about mental health. And they reminded the students that taking care of their minds is as important as taking care of their bodies. Thurston involved the staff, the students and the parents in this week-long campus-wide event. The school counselors taught mindfulness and relaxation techniques and they hosted a beach chair lunch featuring an opportunity for student-teacher connectedness. Thurston has helped to reduce the stigma around mental health by treating their students with respect and compassion. This campus-wide Celebration of Mental Health Week is a lovely example of how inclusion and connectedness in our school communities help support the young people and help them become more resilient. We want to thank the staff and the families and the students at Thurston Middle School and honor them with this award.
Great, it probably wasn't looking, because you took so long.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we have Workability Business Partnership.
Yes, so Mrs. Irene White is going to come up and introduce that.
And introduce the award?
The recognition.
What a fun evening. Good evening. I'd like to introduce Cindy Kimbels, who's our Workability PPP Specialist, as well as Chris Costley, who's joined our team this year as our Workability Technician. And they've done incredible work and we're here tonight to present to you some employers that have been supporting our children.
Great, so one of the things that we do, one of the many things that we do is we establish partnerships with, with community businesses that help us by providing work experience opportunities for our students that are in need of work experience. And so we would like to recognize some of those really wonderful employers because we appreciate them so much in their patience and diligence and really giving these kids an opportunity at their first chance, at their first job. So I don't know if we have everyone here, but we'd like to start off with recognizing Radio KX 93.5. We're camera shy people. Behind the radio. And just to give a shout out, they will be running their first ever radio camp this summer.
Right.
Which is very exciting for students that are interested in an opportunity to run their own radio program.
Right, it's been a great program. Thank you for the opportunity. We're really excited to work with the youth and teach them all things business, radio-wise and communication and technology.
I think we're really lucky because I don't think there's too many other communities that have their own local radio station.
I think so too.
That kids get to go get involved in, so thank you so much.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure. Thank you very much.
All right, the next business is the Kitchen, Kitchen in the Canyon. So Chef Patrick, we actually met him through our cooking class for our kids. And what we found out about Chef Patrick was that he's amazing with all types of kids. So he's the chef who's teaching six or seven, eight sometimes, but first-class cooking skills. And then we made wonderful meals and one of the parents said, one of the best things about this class is that she gets, she gets a night off, she makes a side salad and she has the rest. So we'd like to thank Chef Patrick for all that he does.
Thank you, Chris.
Don't run off the. So when I first showed up with Patrick, we were making lasagna. And of course, they offered to make me a plate, but one of the students kept eating all the noodles as he was making his lasagna, so I said, no, go ahead and take the extra one. But what I noticed, and I just have to say, the kids, they loved you.
Thank you.
You connect with students, you connect with staff and you made it fun.
Thank you.
And I appreciate that.
What's been great for me real quickly is Cindy and Chris talked to me about the potential of hiring a couple of boys and girls. And we did, actually, so far. I've had two Caleb's, Caleb one and Caleb two.
Caleb one.
And Caleb one did 50 hours, Caleb two has done 40 hours, just got 10 more to do this weekend and they've been amazing. Just wonderful, so we're hoping we can.
So Caleb one, actually, after his first cooking class, went home, told his dad all about this. And so now his dad's emailing me, can you give me some culinary schools that he, this is what he wants to do for the rest of his life? He was amazing. He had never really done anything in the kitchen prior to that class, so it was really, it was great.
Thank you.
He makes fantastic food, so go.
Thank you.
Oh. Yeah. All right, so next is a place that we're all very familiar with, it's Zink Cafe. John Suckerson is the owner. I approached John and told him about our program. He said, how many can I take? I mean, he truly is a part of this community, what, 25 years in?
30.
30 years.
2018.
So when you think of zinc, you think of great food and a beautiful atmosphere. What I see as someone who's placing students is great management. The employees love being there and they do an excellent job. So I thought, what if we took a couple of our kids in there each year, each year?
Each year.
Going forward. We, it would be a great thing, so thank you very much.
Harrison is doing a great job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, John. All right, next we have the Boys and Girls Club. The boys, okay, all right. So over the years, we've placed several students at the Boys and Girls Club and there's an official way to do this. And this year we have a young lady who last summer had applied everywhere in town and had really struggled to get a job because of, because of some of the disabilities and issues that she has. And I talked to the Boys and Girls Club and they're more than happy to find what her strengths are and, and find a good fit for her. And it's done worlds for her, for her esteem that, and she wants to grow up to be a. Um, and it's done worlds for her, um, for her esteem that, and she, she wants to grow up to be a teacher. And so, working at the Boys and Girls Club and giving her that contact with students has just been so wonderful, so thank you very much. I think we just have a couple left. This is a good one, Laguna Playhouse, Wally. There's Wally. So, Wally is a great guy, not only because of his name, and some of our students love the movie Wally, but Wally is just a great, nice, kind man who works so well with some of our students. And, um, we really appreciate you taking the time to teach them your craft.
Well, thank you, and I, I appreciate this too. I've been, not only before I met Cindy and Chris, we've been working with this, I've been working with this student for twenty-seven years there at the Playhouse, but Cindy and Chris have really upped the, upped the ante here, and we're getting more and more students there, so. And I've also worked with the special ed children too, and I love them all, and they do. I'm not a teacher, but, um, I do help these kids learn all about the theater, and, and not only do they help us with their working, they also get to see all the performances, and that way, they're educated in what we, what we show the kids there at the Playhouse.
So, thank you very much. All right, so last but not least.
Oh, we've got two more.
Oh, uh, do you want to introduce?
Oh, sure. So, this one, you guys are all gonna recognize Chuck Taylor, come on up. Chuck, I need a hug. Chuck has worked with a bunch of our kids, and he has just, um, been almost a fatherly type figure to a lot of these students that we've placed with him. And he has really made a difference in their lives, he's been also patient with them, teaching them how to, um, sign in and sign out their timesheet and, and encouraging them and support to come to work every day and to be on time, and all those things that are important, that are really important to learn. And, um, so although so far, we haven't had any students get jobs here with the school district as custodians, they, it has helped propel them into whatever their next job has been, so it's been wonderful work experience for them. But I really appreciate you always being willing, when I say, I have another student, you're like, okay, bring them in, so thank you so much, Chuck.
You're welcome. All right, so last but not least, um, Clark Collins from Collins Design and Development. So, uh, Clark has a very special role in the, uh, community. He takes our, our cottages, right, uh, what we're known for, and the ones that need some TLC, and he turns them into, brings them back to the period, and in a superb way. So, if you ever see one of his open houses, you really have to see it because you get into these cottages and you think you're back in the forties or thirties, you think Betty Davis walking her dog down the street. So, uh, it's truly, uh, it's, he does a great job, he has a lot of talent. So, when we assess our students, um, you know, we try to get to know where they wanna go, what they wanna do, and they tell us different things. So, uh, one student I had wanted to do interior design. And luckily, being from the neighborhood, uh, or the community, I thought, I think I know someone. And so, I approached Clark a couple of weeks later, and I said, hey, you know, this is our program. And to put into perspective, other districts have set programs where they go to the big box stores and they put a dozen students in every year, and they have someone to, to really guide them through. So, when we go to a business, a lot of times, it's, well, you know, it might be tough, but then they stop and they say, I'll do it. You know, just let me know what I need to do, I'm willing to, uh, help these students out. So, we have a student who's learning his craft, and, you know, that is an amazing thing.
Yeah, she's fantastic.
So, really, really appreciate it, all right? All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, before these two lovely people leave, I certainly need to acknowledge all of their efforts. Mr. Costley came to us, um, as a successful businessman, he has a passion for working with kids, wants to educate, and he landed this position. And time and time again, you know, we, we laugh about how he's overqualified for his role, but the gifts that he brings to us, um, is priceless and so meaningful. Cindy obviously changed her role when Corey Brown left us and has moved into a leadership role with TPP and Workability, and has done an amazing job. The community partnerships that they're bringing to our students is, is phenomenal. Years ago, we didn't have a TPP program, oh, about ten years ago, we didn't have a TPP program. And at that time, we were graduating children, students, that basically stayed home on couches because they were not gonna go to community college for one reason or another, or a vocational program. And I can honestly tell you that that doesn't happen to our kids anymore. We're reaching out to them, we're connecting them with real-life experiences in an effort so that they can find their passion. Um, so I wanna thank you both for all your work, you know, I love you both.
Thank you for letting us know what businesses are helping our students.
Thanks.
That finishes our recognitions for this evening, and we now move to public comment, non-agenda items, I have several cards here. Uh, first card is Megan Hunt.
Hi, I'm Megan Hunt, I have two daughters that are currently in the CLC program, and I have a daughter in kindergarten at Help of the World that I hope will be in the CLC program next year. I'm concerned because I feel like a big, important decision is being made for the beach community in a rush. After two years of seeing the district committed to guiding CLC through this transition, suddenly, with just two months of school left, the parents are told the district is not necessarily committed to replacing the CLC teachers, and that the board would be asked for guidance. At the last meeting, we heard a detailed staff report about the legal requirements of the program and district finances. I'm concerned that I'm not also hearing an equally detailed discussion of the value of the program as an educational approach and of the value of alternative education to the families in Laguna Beach. I believe the board is trying to make an informed decision. I would like to see more than, than an impromptu discussion about the teaching philosophy of CLC and how it is different than the main campus. I'd like to know how similar programs are successfully implemented in other schools around California. These things seem essential to any discussion about whether it is fiscally responsible to hire teachers. So, before any changes are made, please show us how this is being done. We keep being told that the staffing problems at CLC is the result of a perfect storm. The board can take the time to decide to weather this storm. Um, I would like to yield the balance of my time to the next speaker.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker, the next card I have is Shannon Huhn.
Good evening, I'm Shannon Huhn, and, um, thank you for the opportunity to address the board. Um, I'd like to quickly touch on a few things we heard at the last board meeting, just for the record, because people left talking about a couple of things that seem a little distracting, that I think all, all of us are sort of fixing, so I just wanted to go on the record and talk about them. Um, the first one is the compliance issues. This is not how the staff report read, but people sort of walked away from the meeting talking about those as if they were sort of egregious failings of the program, or sort of a referendum on the value or the integrity of the program. Um, and, and these are really administrative oversights that are easy for the district to fix, and, and we are fixing them. Um, the volunteer hours, CLC doesn't require them, we haven't required them for quite some time, we just need to update our website, just by volunteers. Um, the equity in class sizes, um, the CLC class sizes actually happen to be in line with the other class sizes in the district this year. Um, looking at the district budget, um, the average class size district-wide for grades one and two looks like it's nineteen point eight, although there was something at El Moro where it seemed like the second grade class was at twenty-eight students per teacher, which that's probably actually lower than that. So, one, two is probably more like seventeen. Um, and then the average class for three, four is twenty-one, so with twenty, the program happens to be right there. Um, and I think we would hope the district would just maintain that equity going forward, now they know it's a requirement. Um, the other things are, are easy to fix, the annual evaluations, that really, that requirement really supports that the state wants districts to understand these programs. And maybe the district could do a couple of years of these evaluations going forward um, before deciding to make any change, that changes that would have long-term implications for the programs. Um, the teachers, a-again, not the intent, but people kind of walked away thinking that, um, nobody wanted to teach at CLC. So, so I wanted to emphasize that we are looking right now internally at a very limited pool of volunteers, and there are people in the community who want to teach at CLC. And the last time we took applications from the outside world, we had a lot, so, um, I just wanted to mention that. And then fiscal responsibility, that was a big focus in the last meeting, and it is very important. And it happens in service of the children's education. Um, it's the fifth out of five strategic goals for the district, and it says the district will maintain fiscal solvency and transparency to ensure support of student learning. Solvency is not short-term cost cutting, it is the ability to meet long-term financial obligations. Um, now, if the district has a solvency problem, you know, that might change things, I'm, I'm not aware of that. Um, but every year, we have thirty-five to fifty families who want a slot at CLC. That is twenty to twenty-five percent of all incoming first-grade families who want this particular alternative program, a whole child looped in, multi-graded, four-year parent participation program. That is the referendum on the value of the program. So, please show us how you're using that fiscal responsibility to support student learning for those families. Thank you very much.
Kim Lindsay.
Thank you for having us. So, fiscal responsibility was a term that was used a lot at the last meeting, and I had to sit with myself and ask myself, what does fiscal responsibility mean, right? So, hiring two teachers, if we don't need those two teachers, that's fiscal responsibility. But I would also say that fiscal responsibility is taking a step back and looking at the whole picture, right? So, what are the underlying values of the program? What's the overall return on the money already spent? Do people in the community want an alternative school? Look at the enrollment at Annalise and the Montessori schools. Do people in this community want an alternative school? I would ask that we do an analysis and study if people in the community want an alter, alternative school, and if it is fiscally responsible to tear down a program quickly without really doing the study, if it makes sense for our community. It feels like it's a rash and quick decision being made. Um, to me, it felt like options were just quickly thrown out at the meeting without study, quickly thrown out as, hey, let's look into these, without really taking the time to evaluate these options. One of these options is a first through fourth grade class. That's not gonna be a good option. So, that leaves us with three other options, one of the options is closing the program. I think we need to take the time to step back and look at what does it need to be fiscally responsible? What does this community in this district want to provide to these children? Just last year, we decided to build buildings called the CLC Buildings. Two million dollars were approved to replace the trailers that had been there for years with new CLC buildings. The new temporary buildings are there now. Our kids took all their artwork off of the walls right before open house so that they could move into these temporary buildings, so that the new buildings could be built, the CLC Buildings. That was last year, and now we're not sure if we're going to have the program. I would ask, we'll take a step back and look at fiscal responsibility from a less myopic view, a grander view. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next card is from Perry Doshi O'Neil.
Good evening, my name is Perry Doshi O'Neil, I have a student who's currently in third grade at CLC and a student who graduated from CLC and is on top of the world with Mr. Crow right now. Um, I wanna thank all of you for taking the time to hear us, we heard you at the last meeting. And I especially wanted to thank Dee for writing back to my daughter, she wrote a handmade card asking that CLC be saved, and she really appreciated the fact that the school board was willing to hear her and explain to her where you were coming from. And in that response, um, you know, the fiscal responsibility, the inability to hire new teachers was brought up. And that's just what I kind of wanna touch on is, um, we, i-if we are constrained by hiring within our, um, school district, I would ask that, um, you as the board and the administration help promote and encourage the current teachers to consider CLC as an opportunity for them to start, either continue what's there or create their own alternative education program. Um, with the mis-hireings, with what's happened over the past two years, it is, you know, just as a human, it's difficult to say, well, I'm gonna leave my position here, teaching third grade, and take a risk over here at CLC. And, um, you know, parents want the program, new, um, students wanna come in. And what I ask is if administration would consider, I appreciate that Lisa sent out the, um, individual, you know, application here, this is open until the twenty-sixth of May, not just in the lump that was done previously, but, you know, that was an amazing effort, and I appreciate that. But I wonder if, maybe if administrators, if, if teachers could hear administration say, we are evaluating this program, but if you are interested in alternative education, if you are interested in contributing to TOW as a campus, taking CLC, making it your own, because as we discussed, this program is going to thrive and succeed with teachers that have a passion, just like Cheryl and Leia had, with a school board that supports them and wants to see it succeed. I am uncertain, in my view, and I am not a teacher on this campus, so this is just my view, whether the teachers feel that, yes, the administration and school board would support me in making this leap from my classroom. So, I ask you to please consider maybe making a statement, or whatever's appropriate in your role, to let teachers know, if there's someone out there that's interested in trying this and trying to make this program happen, because we got interest, we wanna, there are people, there are students that want an alternative program, to give it a chance, and that your administration would support it. Thank you.
Jordan's answer caps.
My name is Jordan, I'm a third grader in CLC. CLC is a great place. Parents come into CLC and do fun projects with art makers, space, and yoga. Please do not cancel CLC, we have been waiting a long time for new buildings. If CLC was canceled, we would get really excited for our new classrooms that were promised to us. And then, the school, the school board, the council, they all promised us the right of new buildings. A unique thing about CLC is the gradients. When I was in the first grade, I didn't know anything, so I asked a second grader, can you help me? Well, what are you doing? Second grader is helping me a lot in the new space. Once I could not take on top of the world, if CLC was canceled. Every time, if I looked towards CLC, I'd been, I would feel horrible, I would remember the place where the joy of my life happened. My dreams to come up with a CLC in fourth grade graduation speech. I could not take that pressure. Please do not punish the kids in CLC or less students next year.
I'm Kelly's answer, Jordan's mom, she really wanted to come and speak. Um, I had to talk to her about what was going on because the newspaper article- I had to talk to her about what was going on because of the newspaper article that came out a couple of holidays ago. So, and I do want to say very quickly, we loved Claudia, we loved Claudia too. And she told us to vote for Keta Brown because she'll watch out for the children. So, anyway, Jordan would not have been able to speak with, to you without CLC. You should have seen her in first grade. They have to do presentations all the time and it's the same group of kids and parents. And she could barely speak. So this took a lot of courage. I just want to, I've been ruminating since the last meeting. And I'm a lawyer and so I'm looking at all the ed code and it's very short for alternative schools. It's very easy read. But, and I've looked at the district's purpose and strategies and goals. It's the district's job to hire and retain excellent teachers. And one of your strategic goals is the district will recruit, hire, train, and retain high-performing staff. It is not CLC's fault that we have two teacher resignations and that you all, you know, like it's the district's responsibility to hire, train, and retain teachers. Okay? It's, CLC should not be punished for teacher resignations. I know CLC can be great with the right teachers. I know enrollment will increase. I know that CLC will improve. It will, and I don't think you can effectively evaluate CLC with no teachers. So let's get some good teachers in there and then let's evaluate the program. And you have to evaluate every year, incident. The teachers do not have to be volunteers within the district. I know the code says teachers and students are volunteers, but it's not limited to this pool within the district, according to code. We would love to have district teachers, they're talented. But I also know a lot of them are really happy of the jobs they have. So also, I just wanted to bring up that my understanding of the, and Lisa Winston can speak more to this, but my understanding of why teachers are hired and it came up, Keta brought this up, you couldn't be more conscious hiring teachers, they're all probationary for teachers. So the other thing I want to mention is in the code, it talks about funding shall be at the same levels as other educational programs, not that it may be. It's mandatory. So the funding issue for eventually closing CLC doesn't seem to fit with the code. Also, parents can request alternative school at any time, that's code 58502. I don't, I think we've got a good alternative school and we don't want to have parents like requesting for more alternative schools, really millie. So let's work on the one that we have. Thank you.
Are there any others who wish to speak and public comment on non-adjunct items who have not turned in a card?
Link with Ken. Thank you, report member. Yeah, you know, I don't watch TV, but I was on a plane back from Washington and I watched this TV show called Little Big Lives for Big Little Lives. And they actually had a discussion between a couple moms about the fact that the public schools in their town were more like private schools. Because the parents, you know, this is something we've heard here in Laguna Beach. Our schools are as good as private schools because we give a lot of money through school power. And, you know, and so, you know, I was thinking about that a lot because, you know, I've always said we never want public schools to be governed the way private schools are governed. And we, and people in private schools don't want to have their schools governed the way public schools are governed. Then I was thinking about it, you know, Board President Vickers was quoted in the Orange County Register last year saying, "The school board doesn't run the schools." And yet the education code says the school board does run the schools. Now, obviously, we don't want the school board to micromanage educators. We've got a wonderful celebration here tonight of some great educators. But you all are not educators. You're not here as educators. You're here to govern the school district. And I've been, and I want to speak with respect to this issue of the CLC because what I've been saying to this school board for the last ten years is that superintendents should be sent, you should invest, if you really care about your superintendents, you should invest in them by sending them to the Kennedy School Government. If they go to the Kennedy School Government, they would learn that in any decision-making process like this, you have three spheres that you need to combine. You have your values, your community values, you have your capacities, and you have your stakeholders. This situation that's developed up at CLC is a classic case study of the Kennedy School Government of a lack of governance by the school board to combine and have those three spheres overlap. Those spheres have been disintegrated by what's happened here. And it all began, or at least for me, it all began a couple of years ago when I opposed the transferring of funding from the rainy day fund into the building funds for building projects that included the CLC buildings. Not because I was against the CLC buildings, but I didn't think that the building program had received the right kind of deliberation and input. And I didn't think that you should be spending, taking ten million dollars, actually it was twelve million dollars, out of the seventeen million dollar rainy day trust fund that took fifteen years to accumulate, you took it all and spent it on a very short notice without the community really deliberating over how that money was going to be used. At the same time, you have a thirty million dollar unfunded pension obligation. As far as I know, there's no strategy for dealing with. And so we're just giving, we're celebrating the retirement of all these teachers. That's great. Are we going to be able to pay the retirement pensions of the teachers that retire in the future? I'm out of time now, but I just want to say that my objection to the whole approach to the CLC project was that you didn't involve the values, the capacities that we have at CLC and the stakeholders and have full deliberations before you spend a lot of money. And the last thing I'll say is this, Mr. Lamcito said this building project was going to be the board's legacy. Well, I'm afraid the legacy of the board that Mr. Lamcito was talking about is a lot of people that were given expectations that are now being frustrated. And it's a classic case study of poor governance.
Are there any other public comments from items not on the agenda? We will finish that section and move on to reports from board representatives. And we don't have to do that this evening. Too much. So, Sharon.
Good evening, everybody. Well, that was a wonderful ceremony that you guys gave all the educators. I know that either my children had those teachers or I worked with them or and they will be missed and their tribal knowledge will be missed. And not, you know, it'll take a while for us to get used to not having them around. But also, I would like to thank the PTA for Teacher Appreciation Week and for our little bags we got. That was fun. It was fun to go in our boxes and see we have these little gifts and open those up and to wake up that morning and think, oh, it's Teacher Appreciation Lunch and I don't have to make lunch. And it's always delicious. So that was great. And then Yadi and our Foreign Language Department attended a, and Mindy, I think, attended a CTA ethnic minorities conference. And they are moving ahead together to plan for a cultural fair at the high school. So we will look forward to that and they hopefully will get that, are looking to do that here in June. So, yep.
CSCA, Margaret?
Good evening. Yes, I also would like to thank the administration for a lovely retirement party. I know CSCA and our classified members of tonight really have been backbone of this community, both of them. So I truly appreciate the time that was taken this evening. And on PTA, as far as Staff Appreciation Week, we all enjoyed the appreciation of getting things in our boxes and the food and all of the things. Especially at TOW, we have a special lunch and it's kind of exciting that everybody looks forward to. And, you know, on a positive note, CSCA has finished negotiations. So I thank the administration and the board. You have a diligent team here. We worked and my side, we worked hard to get to where we are. I feel we have something that's very positive to move forward with. I am waiting for it to get through six-ten policy. And if I have to live six-ten policy anymore, I am just over it, to be honest with you. Because we have such exciting things and I want to move forward with it. We will be voting on June seventh and eighth on the sites with our site representatives. And I would be letting the principals know exactly who those people are. We will be doing it before school, after school, during break. And like I said, we'll not interfere with any of the day's activities of work. And then we will have it ratified at our June fourteenth meeting. But we'd like to make sure that all of you, you'll be getting this flyer, stop by the June fourteenth barbecue to recognize our classified staff again, our JEM award, which is a secret at the moment, and just be a part of the celebration, even if you can only come by for five or 10 minutes. We really appreciate it and I know the classified staff appreciates seeing all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any representative organizations? School Power, PTA?
Well, she's here, but she left.
She left. I mean, she was here earlier, I think. We outlasted Kathleen. Okay, board members, if you have, this is a timely report that I made to you representative at the ACT. Maybe, committee?
School Power, Alabama. And they talked about teacher grants, which was very exciting. And I think it's done, yeah. They voted on everything and, yeah, they were very pleased. So they worked hard on it, so it was good.
Are you guys going to turn on screen?
We should get that, that package.
Did you guys have a meeting?
That's not till Thursday. I just got the package.
Oh, the, oh, it's Thursday. The full agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Well, I was going to mention that, Ken and I do go Thursday morning. If you sing that and have anything that you want us to represent, you're coming on, make sure you let one of us know. And I received information from Patty today that they changed that recognition. And instead of having the large recognition, they did it at the schools of their senior awards. And so I enquired her because we will be doing it here at the Awards of Excellence. And then also that student, the senior student overseas, recognition at the hours complication and a scholarship at that time. In addition to that, and I did print it out, she sent me the names of sixteen students altogether who are receiving awards for, on their programs in CCA. And, see, I did go to the PT meeting at Thursday and Jenny did a nice job of representing everyone. And you can really throw them forth. So it was, it's always, she shares a lot of information with her parents. And I also went to El Moro PTA where I was going to say that they had a presentation. There Shannon, you know, went to confirm that PTA, so they are, they're being the parents of the program. That's it for, for those who have a presentation.
Actually, I'm going to go over a board. I think tonight speaks for itself, so.
Thank you.
Same.
All right. We'll move on to our consent calendar. Are there any items that members would like to remove from consent calendar? I just want to call the accepted. So I'm going to add a comment on the administration. All right. Anything else? I mean, a motion to approve consent calendar items A through N with the exception of A1. Are there any exceptions?
A2.
A2. Okay, sorry.
Go A2.
I slipped along with it. You said the correct one, I slipped along with it. Does anyone have any corrections or comments? The fifth now.
Yeah, I just have, just on A1, page seventeen, you just need a space. I lost the space.
Move around and move from, oh, all the way from. Okay. The very last.
Page seventeen.
Go on it. Okay. If not, well, others said I would pass all in favor. On my side, close. Very small. And then we need a motion for the minute of the eleventh, special need A2. So move. Second. All those in favor? On my side, close. And extensions. Thank you. We have several information items tonight. First by the special education update from Dr. Devo and Miss.
Well, I'd like to invite Ivory White to the podium. As you know, she's extraordinary and she's been leading the way. She has a fun update for us to see.
Yes, fun. Are we ready?
Yes.
Typically, when we talk about special education, it's not always a fun topic to talk about. But tonight will be. I do have a presentation for you. So first of all, thank you for allowing me to provide a special ed update. Tonight, I'm going to highlight some specific things that we're doing on each of the campuses. And clearly, these folks over here are instrumental in making sure that all those things are carried out. And they are fabulous to work with. As you know, we serve lots of different kinds of kids within our school district. And they all have a variety of needs. And the truth is that they all come to school with a desire to learn. For some, we know that it's harder than for others. But one of the things that we know and that we've been able to create in our district is a learning environment where we have truly blurred the lines between special education and regular ed. It's a hard, tight rope walk. And sometimes there's even criticism that says, maybe we blurred too far, that our special ed teachers are working more with general ed kids or vice versa. But I can tell you that it's a wonderful thing and many districts across the state desire to be able to create these inclusive environments on behalf of children. It's hard to be called special. It is not an identification that is welcome by many. I want you to watch this. Our kids are unique, they're remarkable. And the takeaway from that short little clip, special needs kid, and did you hear the audience? Did you hear the kids rallying support? It was an amazing experience that I know that Mindy Hawkins had shared with me. And obviously, the amplification isn't great, but honestly, it can bring it to your needs. It's really easy here to be proud of our inclusive environment. The other morning, last Tuesday, and Jason told me, only five slides. Annalise just said only five slides, but it's really hard. I did put it all with five slides. And I'm really trying to be brief. But I have to tell you this story. The other morning, as I frequently do, as we all do, we make calls in the morning on the way into the office. I did two as I'm going to work. One was one of the special ed advocates that I work closely with. And he was telling me that Irene, I'm doing the best I can to kind of work with you, but the parent may lawyer up because they want you to fund after-school tutoring five days a week. Kids in private school, he's getting that. They feel like if he comes here from private school, you need to fund that. So I hang up the phone, it's cordial, you know, we're going to be moving into an IEP. So the second call was a father of four students in the district. And one of the things he said to me was, Irene, since my mother died, you are the second most influential woman in my family. I don't share that with you to say that I'm anything special, but these families trust us to make good decisions on behalf of your kids. And these parents, let me tell you, their journey hasn't been easy. And they're looking to us to help us guide them. What, our jobs are complex, requiring us to be present and responsive. No matter when and where, we have to be in the moment. Whether it's an assessment request for a child, whether it's a preschool student who's newly identified as autistic, whether it's a child move-in that has a tremendous amount of needs, we have to be responsive and present and available because we want to invest in their children and help them be successful. There are so many great things that we are doing in each of the elementary or at each of our sites. And I've listed out a few. And I've listed out a few with the help of our psychologists, and I'd like to highlight those for you. One of the things that we're always looking to do is look at what the research says about what works. If we have kids that are continuing to not make progress, we don't want to continue to do more of the same, right? So we're always looking at advancing our expertise. So at the elementary level, we're using watchminders. It's a new revolutionary item, and you can see a young lady wearing a watchminder, and we're using it in general ed and in special education. And what we're finding is an increase in executive functioning skills. So no longer is an aide coming to prompt the kid, but they're looking at their watch to remind them to take either a sensory break or get back on track or whatever it is. So in addition to that, we've been running our fitness club at the elementary sites. And it's a wonderful opportunity for us to get those sensory needs met of students so that they can walk into the classroom ready to learn. Again, it's not just special education identified kids, it's regular ed kids too that are having certain types of issues that classroom teachers are reporting. Our data, we're taking better data, and it's reporting that it's effective. We have kids whose teachers are reporting that they're more attentive after they've participated in fitness club. We've talked about second step implementation in a previous presentation. And again, one of the things that I love is special ed is not a separate silo. I don't sit over there in my office and talk to just special ed people. All of our worlds overlap and integrate in every aspect of what we do. We've done great things as it relates to communication tools for IAs. They talk on walkie-talkies at El Moro on the campus, making sure that if someone is an outlier, that someone's going there to be able to pull them in to a social situation, or recognizing if the kid needs that break, they can alert that person that they're headed over to a certain field. Our IA PLC model, we're really excited, or I'm really excited about hearing from folks that want to include all of the IAs in our PLC. Because within special education, we've got lots to talk about. We have to share strategies so that we can be successful. Lunchtime social facilitation project, fast-forward growth that we've seen, both at Top of the World as well as El Moro, making a difference for kids. From clipping up and down to using our aides to teach teachers to use classroom dojo as a better system for managing behavior. Training, 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 that's what we're utilizing our sites and our specialists to do, regularly, weekly, daily, whatever it takes. At the middle school level, again, they're working on lunch, break, social facilitation project that we have placed through the Boys and Girls Club that we're continuing, which is exciting. We've seen more kids this year receive accolades through the Special Visual Arts Honors as well as the Blue and Gold Awards for Academic Achievement. Our investment in REED 180 has paid dividends. Our kids are making progress and they're moving out of those classes and are able to, are able to integrate at the middle school and the high school level in general education classes. Are we perfect? No, but we're working on it. Lead role, we have a student who's taken a lead role in The Lion King production. Our IA PLC, a lot of time there. We're paying them additional dollars because they can't find time during their workdays. They're going, 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 so they can come in and at times in the morning and be able to participate in their general PLCs, but also with the aides have conversations because it's rich, meaningful, and it's helpful to know what the other person's doing. Collaborative teaching, we're investing dollars in sending teachers at Thurston Middle School to the Maryland Friend Presentation at the county that's coming up here soon. And it's expensive, folks, it's expensive to have two teachers in one classroom. But it is magical for both regular ed and special ed if you're able to do it well and pull it off. And we're continuing to try to do it. I just had a meeting today at Thurston Middle School this afternoon where the teachers stayed till 4:45, I missed my meeting with Mr. Duddy. And we were talking about the collaborative teaching that they're doing at Thurston and how they want to do more of it. And part of it is yay, 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 but part of it is we have constraints. We have a budget that we have to live within. So finding that balance and figuring out what those priorities are obviously an ongoing, ongoing journey. Behavior interventions, mental health awareness, using special ed staff to work with general ed staff to create all those things is wonderful. And at the high school level, I'm not going to read all those for you. You can see that we do a lot of things in our department that we're really super proud of. You heard of their workability, you saw their genuine interest in our students. They're passionate, we're all passionate about what we do. So it's exciting stuff. So when we take a look at trends and implications, oh gosh, there's a whole other slide. Beyond the school buildings. Wow, let me just pick one thing to share because I'm getting the look. No, I'm not getting the look. Oh, okay, I was told to put the big air jumping Irene with one of our, with one of our students who happens to be blind. Look at her, would you know that? No, she enjoyed it tremendously. And we're in the process of writing another grant for additional funds to be able to host another successful experience like that. Then we invite our families to go to saddleback states, the parent presentations. I think it was handful, maybe five, if that. We had approximately 200 participants. They were our families, enjoying each other, connecting together. Very powerful. So I'd love to talk about all those things, but I won't. The next one, in the last 12 years, here's what we've seen. Special education numbers continue to increase. We're going to be over 400 kids by the time we get called. I can pretty much assure you of that with the number of calls that we're getting about moving. Are we a destination district? We're a destination district in general ed and in special education. We have families that show up and they tell us they're here because they've learned about our programs. Does that mean we're great, we do a good job? We're continuing on that road and trying to get better at our craft? But that's something that we're continuing to monitor. The autism population has almost tripled in the state. In our district, we went from 15 kids to 75 kids in the last 12 years. So that's, I've. Our other health impaired population has doubled from 27 to 60 kids. So the children that qualify in that particular area have either attention deficit issues, attention disorders, or they also have other maybe social emotional issues that do not necessarily warrant ED eligibility. Specific learning disabled population has almost doubled from 57 to 111. And part of you bring one to, we had one 12 years ago, we now have six students. In all, there are 13 eligibility categories. The reason why I share, I don't share the others is because they're either the same or they're lower. So these are the areas where we've increased our population, so what does that mean to us? It means that we, it's stretching on our resources, that we have to bring in more people to deliver the quality care that we've been providing them. We do exceed the statewide average for identified students at this time. We were under when I started here, so you can blend me. Okay. But I bring that up not because, I'm proud of that. I bring that up because one of the things that we've been gathering information on is who these kids are and they're move-ins, folks. They're not necessarily kids that have been here. In fact, our high school members, as you know, have increased significantly or will increase next year significantly, to the point where we're having to add a fifth teacher because there are four teachers who are going to be on, be significantly on caseload level. Supreme implication, Supreme Court ruling. There's been conversation about that this school year. I know Dr. Gloria has gave you some information. I provided some information in the board packet as well. The implication for us is not as significant as it may be in other places. We really look at whether or not our children are making benefit. If our kids are not making progress, we're reconvening those IEP meetings and having conversations about what we need to do differently to get the progress that we need. Dyslexia legislation, that's going to help us blur the lines even further. Because one of the things that we know is that if we identify children earlier, that they're not likely to require special education later down the road. So we formed a workforce, task force, and oh my gosh, we've done some great work within a short period of time. So with that said, I was going to show you a respectability video, but I'm going to tell you about it, and if you'd like to see it, we'll forward it to you via email. As you know, Mr. Duddy, we piloted this year. We have one of our parent mentors, wow, she's not a parent mentor, she's our special education PTA liaison, which is one of the things that we've been able to accomplish this year in all the different campuses. This particular person had a passion about how can we do more related to teaching disabilities? And they've made their own videos at El Moro School once a week. There's teacher activities, and these videos are just incredible. The one that I wanted to show you was Coach Blanton and his story about stuttering and how he had to overcome that. And every week, three, two to three teachers or instructional aides have volunteered to be in this video to talk to kids about what they struggled with as children and how they overcame it. So it's very, very powerful. So if you're interested, we've been hoping to make that available. Thank you, I apologize for talking so fast.
See there, I have questions.
Okay, sorry.
Questions? I'd love to see the video.
Yeah.
I want to say to everybody.
Kudos for all your work with that. And we're hoping to bring that respectability mom, maybe call it something different on each of the campuses, but to incorporate those activities on our other sites moving forward next year and utilizing our parent mentors to make that happen.
Somebody put a comment on the presentation we just had updating us on special ed?
Thank you, Irene, it's really awesome. It's growing and growing, and that means that the services have to keep growing. I know it's, it's a lot, but I know if you really, can really identify it and say that it has, it has impacted families and maybe with us. And I know that's the responsibility. And don't ever start that, you know, we like hearing this stuff. It's okay.
Thank you.
We like hearing that all the things there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Bridget. Before we move on, I want to thank Irene because the one thing I can say, with all the growth and things over time, she and I have talked quite a bit about trying to support the role that she's in. And obviously, the new director of social emotional support, I think, will be extremely helpful because the picture I have of Irene when I walked in the door and I was told very early on about the work that she does, she has her fingers in every little hole, trying to keep everything going for kids. And everything that Irene does is about students. She's so student-first, and that's our program. And she's hiding behind, I guess you can't see, but what you saw was the smallest of all the things that she's done this year. And she's taken on even more things that we could, she and I get to work together tomorrow on some more things. And I actually miss that her office is right next to mine because I'm not going to pop out and see what's going on all the time. But I do like going in and visiting the space, which is important. But thank you, Irene, probably with you and Dr. Devo for all of her support as well, so.
Thank you. Our next information is updated on the visual performing arts. Napa?
Yes, so I'd like to bring Bridget, Bridget Carter, up to the front again. She will do part two of her presentation for the future. Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you for having me again. So we're just going to go over what we've accomplished this year and our future goals. We had the privilege of creating a K through 12 arts planning team. And I was a part of this team. It was a great collaborative effort between administrators, school board members, community members, teachers, and we created an arts plan for our district that had wonderful outcomes. And so right now, what I've been doing, I've had this great privilege of being the BAPA coordinator, is growing our connections with the K through five visual and performing arts programs and working with our great team at El Moro and Top of the World. We have wonderful teachers and administrators, and it's just, we're just looking for more ways to integrate the arts and provide more engaging and meaningful experiences for students. So this is a look ahead. We're also thinking about what we can do in the future school year to improve what we've done and increase our efforts. So this is our mission for our K through 12 planning, arts planning team. And we want to provide exemplary arts education programs to ensure that every child participates in high-quality K through 12 arts learning that leads to success in college and career and in the community in whatever field he or she pursues. So it's a noble plan and it's a five-year plan. So we implemented with my position. And right now, I've gathered such a wonderful plethora of information from our teachers, what they've been doing. They've been doing some great art activities. We have wonderful organizations, and we're just relationship building to enhance all student growth. I'm researching cross-curricular integration and testing out these lessons in classrooms and then connecting with community resources. So we have a great arts community. We have Loca, the Laguna Art Museum, Festival of Arts Foundation and the Festival of Arts, and many other avenues to connect our students with great experiences and eager community members that would love to engage students. So as you saw in our study session, we did a STEAM art activity that was made for second grade students. And I think integration is the key with arts, a whole BAPA program. The more we integrate it K through five and have a creative output at the end of a lesson or even some simple strategies, teachers will notice the engagement levels rising. And it's just scientifically proven that your visual association improves your schemata and you're able to retain that information. And we need future innovators. So art is really the key to creating careers for our students, and they can make their own careers. So this is what we need. This is a video that, not the greatest editor, but this is a video that I made that shows and outlines some of the things that we have done in our program. And.
I can do it, Bridget.
Yes, I can see that. So sorry. There we go. All right. All right, so it should play now. Thank you so much, okay. This is what we've done so far with our program. So there is sound of this. So this was a.
I'll leave it on the laptop.
Okay, no worries, I'll just explain. This is a wonderful integrated unit we had with La Pampa, Laguna Planer Painting Association. And what they did is created for all fourth grade students, a planer painting project. So this is the critique that students are engaging in at the Urban Museum. And then we did a paint-out with all fourth grade students in the district at different locations. And the canvases were provided by La Pampa. And we had a, the principals were nice enough to fund paints and brushes. And we were able to bring all the students outdoors with ESOS that were donated to paint some landscape painting, which is iconic to our town. And it's the founding of, of the Festival of Arts. The La Pampa Association is what made this town, is planer painters. So really a great project. Those are El Moro students, and they got to pick out their scene scope out where they wanted to paint. And they were very proud with their projects. As you can see, they all look different, and that's the key. They got to choose what they wanted to do. And then I hung them up at seven degrees for a small evening so that parents and teachers and community members could see the paintings and get that experience. It was really cool to walk around, hear all the kids' comments on what they had to say about their painting. And they were using our vocabulary. And then the Laguna Art Museum is just a fantastic organization. We're encouraging more teachers, some have already seized this opportunity and have been doing it. And more teachers are jumping on board once they've seen how wonderful this connection is. And the Laguna Art Museum will, free of charge, have the students come in, do an art activity. Kids get to take it home. It's a wonderful experience for them. And this is one of my, I think, the teachers' favorite projects where they got to look at xylan rates, another STEAM activity, the veining of trees and where they get their nutrients. And they were able to create these really cool contour line drawings with paint pens. And then they. And then they remember that information. They were showing me the xylan rays. And then we have, this is a clip from our STEAM field trip. And so that's what they were getting, they got to do, they got to see fish and inverted rays up close, read the story and then create artwork from it. So it's just, these meaningful experiences just tie everything in together. And rather than doing all these small units, it's just something very simple that we can help our teachers to spread this knowledge to them and integrate a very small art activity at the end of a lesson that just integrates everything. And now we've gotten the Laguna Art Museum to bring all these programs onsite so the teachers that can't come to the museum can come and get that experience. We're having a show there too this summer, so you're all invited. And we had some performing arts integration as well. This is Jazz Reach. It's a program provided and paid for through the Laguna Beach Life. And they came at El Moro and the fifth grade students were able to hear what music is made of, harmony, rhythm and melody. And they were able to learn all about that and engage and it was a really cool experience. So we hope to incorporate more performing arts avenues in the future year. Yeah, so I think it's rare that they got to see such wonderful performances from professionals, which, they're from New York. We had a fifth grade team also participate in hand painting a mural. And we've just, now I've been trying to integrate art lessons, this is an art lesson we did. So my plan is just to keep this going. And next year, hopefully, I have a schedule where I can come to each location on a regular basis and just keep this project and improve it and spread this to the performing arts even more. Maybe even go through drama and performing arts and see how we can find avenues for that. So appreciate everything, so.
Okay, thank you Bridgette.
Thank you.
I just think it's amazing what she's done in such a short amount of time. And now really Bridgette, you reached out to the community as a whole. It, just kudos. I, yeah, it's, you've done far more than I could ever have drafted. Thank you, let's not have our masters ever again.
Bridgette's an extraordinary instructional services team member. We're so pleased she's a part of our team and we get to share her with the high school. So thank you for that, thank you for joining our team.
Any public comment after this presentation?
You've done more than I ever thought possible with just your one, you know, doing the one period. Amazing, so grateful for you and the community out there bringing art to our communities.
I appreciate the, two things particularly that you've done. I think we had some relationships a while back with local entities, particularly the Art Museum and LCAD. And they kind of drifted away and you really refreshed those because I believe they are willing to do things, but they just haven't been a connection and kind of lost it a bit. And then the other is the calendar that's put out. I really appreciate that, to have it all laid out, when things are coming in to know so that we can go and participate in and see the students learn. Thank you.
Our next information item is a report of supplementary materials.
This is quite short, but it's just, I wanted to show you the last two supplementary programs that were brought forth at the curriculum council and approved by the curriculum council. So the first is an intervention program, K five and intervention teachers were particularly pleased by the comprehension success and the ability of the program to provide prescriptive supports for students in reading comprehension and a SCQ brought by Michelle Martinez.
So she's going to use those first?
Yes.
Nice. We're short.
Thank you. Any public comment on our questions for Asia? Okay, then we look to the next item is positive financial update. Mr. Dixon?
President Victor, I only have a few minutes on each page to go with it. Uh, so there's our. There are not a lot of changes.
We're going to hold you to it.
It does not reflect the date payment you got in your notes at the end of March. So at that time, and we still are tracking as pretty much expected. The one big change that came in April was that our property tax receipt was about 1% less than what we were expecting. So it came a little bit less than we thought, but we are making those adjustments right now. So you'll see that at the budget proposal in June with the estimated actuals and the provisions moving forward. I would like to point out on page eighty-three, you can see all the fund and the projected income balances. General fund is tracking as expected. The Fund eleven, Fund thirteen, same. Fund seventeen, which is our basic A differential, still a little over sixteen million. And all the Fund forties for the CIT and FERC, which also has deserved or replaced as. With that, I would have any questions regarding?
I just had a quick question on page one. The occupational, physical and speech therapy, division therapy, does it all run at district or not?
So where are the pages we look?
What's the speech is about? Seven up from the bottom. Last page in the.
I would have to.
Five in eight five, five in eight six.
I'll have to look into that to be absolutely certain, but those are our services. Are the.
The OT and PT would definitely be outside the district because we don't employ those individuals.
Under number eighteen.
Okay, that's what, that's what I assume. I assume probably the vision, speech therapy are.
That's probably contracted services.
Yeah, I'm. Just looking at it.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, any public questions, comments on this item? Thank you. Our next item, beginning of our action items. Our first item tonight, number nineteen, approval to add sports of lacrosse and wrestling to the Laguna Beach High School Athletic Conference.
I'll have Victor Neal give a little brief update as to what information needs to put together and what your recommendations are at this point. First, a running joke in our house when you're on a long day or something's going hard. We always say you have to test yourself every day, so appreciate you guys being here and testing yourselves today. Victoria, do you have our slideshow? Did we have some slides on there? It's in the. We only had three. It's in the. It's in there, okay.
Other than the charts?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, we have the charts.
Okay, so basically, we, I laid out a startup cost. Mr. Dixon then extrapolated it over five years, is that correct, Mr. Dixon?
Just identify ongoing versus the one time.
Versus the one time. So if you, if you take a look and you have any questions about the one-time startup, feel free to ask. Lacrosse, boys, is a fairly, you know, to suit a player up, it's between four hundred and four hundred and fifty dollars. I can tell you this, being at Beckman the last eight years, we never had a lacrosse player that did not have their own stuff. You know, our plan would be to assess and buy a baseline set of equipment if we had some kids. But I met with a lacrosse vendor earlier this week and like, one of his things, I was asking him specifically about helmets. Football helmets have to recondition yearly. Lacrosse helmets have a one-time sticker and they're, they're basically have a ten-year life. And I said, well, do you ever have the helmet going out of the ten-year life? He says, no, every time a new helmet comes out that's more updated, the family goes out and buys it. And that, that has been my practice. And we did not at Beckman High School spend any money on kids' outfitting. They all had their own stuff. But again, when you look at four hundred and fifty dollars, and I think we built it out on twenty-five kids, where again, if we were guessing right now, we would probably buy ten to fifteen sets just in case, you know, someone came up and they didn't have it. But that is the actual worst-case scenario build-out number right there.
And the reason it's different for girls versus.
Girls, girls don't wear helmets, they don't wear elbow pads, they don't wear shoulder pads. They have a set of eye guards and a stick, so that's.
They don't pick the crap out of each other like the Ouija?
And not, not, not as.
That doesn't hold in my house.
What are you thinking of the rest of the things?
And that would be the theme and there's.
Okay, the, comparative to.
So it's, it's interesting, like if you go with a single uniform sport, cross-country, track, water polo, you know, they wear one uniform, it's a hundred dollars a kid. You go into a two-uniform sport like basketball where they have a home and a way, it's two hundred dollars a kid. And then you have your balls and that stuff. An interesting one that I think draws a, a good example is baseball. A, you can go out and buy a baseball bat for fifty dollars. Our kids probably all have bats that cost between two hundred and four hundred dollars. None of them asked the school to buy those for them, we wouldn't buy those for them. If we had to provide a bat, we would provide the fifty-dollar bat that fits the regs and is okay. So, you know, to, to outfit a baseball player with a helmet, they probably have three sets of uniforms right now, the bat, a hundred and twenty-five dollar glove. It's actually equally as expensive as lacrosse. But again, most of those expenses are ones we never incur because they end up being personal items. All of the lacrosse players have their own shoulder pads. It's not like football where you check them in and you check them out. So again, if you look, there's your worst-case build-out scenario. But again, baseball is a working example. We're not, you know, we're not spending that. We're, we're buying the uniform they wear. Even the batting helmet, which used to be in the dugout and everybody used the six helmets, everybody has their own helmet now. They don't want to put someone else's helmet on. They had a life scare when they were in elementary school. That's gone away. So other things like they are, what I, I call twenty-point sports, basically you get twenty-point game, twenty games a season. So they're traveling the same as our other teams. Wrestling is a little more tournament-heavy like our lacrosse is. You know, they have five dual matches and they have a lot of tournaments, love lacrosse. I mean, wrestling is a lot like that, so in terms of that piece, very similar to what our cross-country teams do. So very, very comparable to what we had in place. Boys lacrosse is a expensive sport when you look at the whole big picture. Wrestling, other than the startup of the wrestling, that is a very inexpensive sport. They have a single singlet and that's, that's what they wear, headgear usually. Again, the kids all end up buying it themselves and it's a twenty-five dollar, thirty-dollar piece of equipment, so it's not an expensive piece either.
So the five-year qualification is pretty much what we have right now in terms of uniforms coming.
They just, again, we've, we've gone through a whole bunch this year. One of the things that was, was legit that our community came back to us with, like cross-country. Why are we paying for our kids to compete in cross-country meetings? I didn't have a good answer. Because they were, their boosters were paying for that. Nobody goes three years without uniforms anymore, so our boosters were buying uniforms for our teams sometimes rather than us. So what we worked on is, is we worked on a build-out budget to where our teams all get a budget now annually rather than uniforms every third year and a little bit of ASB money. So all of our teams now, over a three-year period from us, get over double than what they used to get. And that was just a reworking of our budget and putting it in our coaches' hands to, here are the things that your kids need and you can spend it on, anything on the kids, to where our boosters now are not funding things that are a part of the regular educational process. So, you know, our teams all now receive somewhere between fifteen hundred and five thousand dollars. Football's a big sport, that's, that's expensive, so it gets a little more water hole. Like we talked about, they have a singlet, they get a little less. But so everybody has an annual budget that these guys would fit right into that same annual budget. And again, it was just a reworking and a redistributing of our numbers. Jeff gave me our athletic number and we worked from there and, and built it out.
Thanks for that. And how is this comparable to other sports like lacrosse? How is that dollar-wise to run comparable to?
Again, once everything's in place, it's the same as our baseball program where, yes, I mean, again, I, I haven't done that, but most of our teams are budgeted at about three thousand dollars and these would fit right in there.
And going into next year, because you got winter and spring, so students will be signing up. I mean, when, when do you decide these are actually going to work with, with students signing up to do it?
Ms. Holtz is here, science teacher. You guys have ever seen her in the room before. She actually played college lacrosse and she comes and sees me every week. Her plan is to run a couple clinics to see how many girls we get out. We have a gentleman from last week who has an eighth-grade son who, he's going, he would help us with staffing. And that would be the plan before the school year ends, get an idea of how many kids we have out and are interested. Wrestling, because we don't have a mat yet, that would have to wait till the summer. But, but basically with the student interest, I mean, how many girls come by and see you on a regular basis?
Quite a few in my classes, asking when the process is going to start.
So we know we're going to have enough to field teams. Out of the chute, we would schedule teams that aren't as good. We would probably play kind of a combined JV varsity. For example, a Sage Hill, we could play their varsity. At Beckman, where I came from, we would play their JV. So we would run a combined schedule that gave our kids the opportunity to get some experience and have some success. You know, we're not going to go schedule the very best right off the bat and.
So can we do that with our, with our leagueing kind of thing?
So we have nobody in our league that plays, so we would be paying, playing, we can do whatever we want. We'd be playing independent at the cross.
Oh, okay.
So that's a little more here, right? That's the league for next year.
Yes.
So this is, this is important that we get this done. It's for training.
Right, we, we. We need to, we need to have success right off the bat. And wrestling's the same way, you know, we would have to be very choosy in the things we wouldn't compete it in to make sure. And all of these successes, what makes the kids enjoy themselves and get out. And, and again, I've been fortunate to be a lot of places and walk these processes and I'm confident we can, we can get it done. It'll be, you know, be, we're going to jump in, but it would be a smaller step. You know, we're not going to jump in and drown ourselves right off the bat.
And after next year, will the other schools have teams?
The Sunset League has some of them playing. And I'm, I'm talking about something where I hope we're not going to be, we're going to appeal that. If we went into the Irvine League, they all have that, yes.
So it's important to note that in order for us to run a boys' lacrosse program, you'll have to be able to run a girls' lacrosse program strictly because of timeline issues. And the wrestling, because it's co-ed, is one of those opportunities that isn't necessarily as incumbent upon the timeline component. We always will be looking, and Lance and I have talked about adding levels as needed to ensure that we have that equitable components of female and male sports and participation as well. And it's also something to be looking at. But, you know, if there is approval tonight to move forward, we're pretty sure that we can accomplish this for very few dollars. That in fact, we already, you know, in our athletics type and budgets, we have enough to cover NASTA coach and head coach in our current system. So there's really no increase there. Our field costs, that's confident that we would be able to manage our field to come up with a system that works and to have a location for our in West End teams to wrestle and have that balance. So, you know, as with all situations, storage will become premium, storing mats, all the things that, you know, when we built high schools, we never think of storing gold for lacrosse, all those different things. But all things I think we can definitely accomplish. And I think our students and our parents and our community have expressed that interest to us, especially this year.
I think like you said, in the original one, I think we were pleasantly surprised with the, the girls' interest in lacrosse. We knew we had a lot of boys playing club. We didn't know we had a lot of girls interested and that was a very eye-opening piece for us.
Here's a question, how many people does it take to make a lacrosse team?
So the girls have how many on the field?
It's eleven and a goalie, so twelve is a low.
And the boys are one less, ten and a goalie. So a, a real, real comfortable number is low twenties. You know, you can function with fifteen, they all get a lot of playing time.
That's the boys.
So girls, what would be a minimum number?
Girls, I mean, you could really minimum do fourteen. You have very limited, limited subs, but it's okay.
It's all right, yeah.
Any public comment on this item? Any more board comment or discussion? All is in favor, so please post. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
We're excited.
Thank you.
Thanks, Irene.
Our next item is act number twenty, approval to apply for waiver pursuant to Section three seven two oh two A. I currently like the time for two K students to attend school, three minutes and then you go to students.
Yes, so we bring this to you for your approval, this again is just.
Yes, so we bring this to you for your approval, this again is, uh, just acknowledges the different and difference in times between our TK class and our full-day kinder classes, this is required by the C D.
Any comment on this item? Motion please, a lot of seven points. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next item is approval of resolution seventeen-ten, notes of attention of Lubinovich Unified School District to grant easement in the city of Lubinovich.
I will take this one. We've been working with the city regarding a perk improvement project above Top of the World, a small park above it. Um, they want to do some improvements that would happen to cross over our property line. Uh, our property line goes to the V-ditch on the slope, it's all very unusable space. Um, however, because it does cross that line and they would want to maintain it because it would become part of usable park space, um, this would be granting them a landscape easement. Um, however, this is a two-step process, so tonight we need to have a resolution pass with the intent that we are looking to do an easement, and next meeting we will actually come with the, uh, easement agreement, public care.
Is there any public comment?
I will, any other board?
So it will be the next meeting, sorry, next meeting's public care, or?
Yes.
All is in favor?
Aye.
I do oppose, this is a resolution we have.
Sort of your individual.
It says a sanction.
We need a roll public.
Oh, okay.
Uh, next item, action on twenty-two, award contract for raking replacements at various sites to Best Contracting Services Inc. in the amount of three hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. Which results in a total project cost of four hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirteen cents.
I will take it. Uh, we had a roofing proj- project scheduled for this summer, um, we did receive three bids, however, also one came after the bid deadline, which is why it was non-responsive. Um, we're doing this the same way we've been doing our roofing projects in the past, which is we buy the materials directly, similarly to the contractor markup, and we bid the insulation and, and they have some minor materials to buy. Best contracting services, uh, came in at the lowest responsive bid, and CI Services is right behind them, and this is pretty much what we expected the cost to come in at, and then some top, or, uh, sorry, Elmoreau covered walkway and gutters, and Thurston, uh, opened a bandroom.
Any other comment? Any issue please? Any discussion or questions? Over six. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, here is a vote. Uh, next is action on twenty-three, award of contract for site work for three modular buildings and music building addition at Top of the World Elementary to Argentson Company Inc. in the amount of nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Very similar, we have three bidders, all of whom were responsive this time, uh, and this is the site work replacing the portals that are currently out there with the permanent modular buildings. Um, this is just the site work, the modular buildings we had taken action on over a year ago, and they are basically, are to be built. And, um, we, uh, for more of this work, uh, the issue goes to proceed on June first so that we can try and get it done, uh, for the summer break.
I just have a card for public comment on this item, Kelly's in two.
Good evening. Uh, I just wanted to remind the board of a few board meetings on the, the new construction. One on January twelfth, twenty sixteen, where, uh, Mr. Dixon addressed the board and, and stated this contract is specifically for the CLC portable replacements with permit rooms and the music classroom. We go down a little bit later and Mr. Lanzado, um, says, uh, the CLC classroom sorely needed a new place, they were well past their prime. And Ms. Brown said, question, is CLC going to maintain the extra classroom they use for math and that sort of thing? And Mr. Dixon said, yes, they're actually going to increase the amount of square footage they currently have, because after our analysis of their educational space, they needed more, and they're going to have a full nine hundred and sixty square foot extra room. But in addition to that, they'll have the off, their office and restroom, so it's an additional, I believe, five hundred and forty square feet, it was all approved. And then at the April twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen meeting, um, that you referred to in your backup materials for this, uh, action item, CLC's, it used, it states, CLC stakeholders, as well as Principal Conlon and Top of the World, were deeply involved in the planning for the Gen Seven buildings. Gen Seven buildings are the buildings, the pre-cut buildings that are being put on the site. I'm speaking to this because my husband was on that committee and spent a lot of time on it and a lot of last-minute meetings, you know, David Katz, right? Um, and he is at home with our children who should be asleep, so I just wanted to remind the board of the construction and the purpose and what the kids have been told, as my daughter stated so, um, earlier, so that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So any other public, public comment on this item? Any motion please? Any more question or discussion?
All there, talk about, go ahead. I love, I, uh, I just wanted to ask, which I did before, so it's all out in the open, so if CLC doesn't continue, how will these rooms be used?
No. Uh, I think, you know, of course, the key for us is, uh, space utilization in all of our school sites. Uh, so with our current situation, um, at, um, Top of the World, we added the all-day, full-day kinder. Um, the science room will need another location, uh, there also is interest in special education to bring, uh, our SDC program. Uh, we have one classroom that we would like to bring over to Top of the World so that, um, we have a little bit of equity beyond both sides. Um, and there's some interest in, in doing that, obviously, space is, is obviously the conversation that we, um, are always somewhat tight and, and locked in. Uh, but we would, um, look at space utilization across the district and programs that we have, and determine what would be, um, the option to put into that space. So as we all aware, a lot of spaces, except for all very, um, needed for our, our teachers and our spaces that are fairly confined to this. So to speak directly to, I couldn't say exactly what it would be yet, but it would, it would need to be a term like site and, uh, program needs.
Okay. And, and these buildings are already built and painted?
There is some installation.
I would not want you to be able to, to direct answer that because we have a, we're still on the planning.
Right.
Trying to have, make a, a big effort to see where we end up and not to, you know, better, we need this.
Correct, but depending on what happens, I wouldn't want empty rooms there and declining, and declining.
And that's the, well, that's the thing, whether we continue, if we continue CLC, are they going to be, as you do this analysis, they could be in any room, I guess is what I'm trying to clarify, or would they be in that building, is there, is that all part of the analysis?
Speak to the building itself, uh, obviously, the, uh, simple statement was, we're taking the immaterial to relocateable, CLC needed a space going to, that makes sense. But if, if the past is any indicator of, of alternative programs, um, an alternative program originally started out in, uh, has been in various locations, it's actually part of the initial discussion, it was approved nineteen-eighty-three, so, uh, it was, uh, it's been housed there for quite a while, um, but it could very well, you know, relocate to another campus if necessary, or if there was an interest or a look it might be due to space utilization, so. Um, that being said, I think, again, it would, uh, premature to have that specific discussion, but to your point, yes, uh, yeah, it's based on space and local capabilities.
So I think it's a little bit, we don't have, we don't have answers to all that, you know, so.
I think the original building, the original building, first?
The continuation school was damaged in the fire that occurred, it was kind of, it was not, um, wasn't cost-effective to replace, to repair it, and it was, it also had some issues with age. So, exactly, before it was a continuation school, I don't know whether it was, but, it's behind the baseball field, that's one. So I think, I don't know whether they would have moved, I mean, they moved, they moved before that happened.
That's right.
Okay, any other discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here is a vote. Okay, now it's time for, um, our last section, which is board members request to kind of complete agenda items, request for information or general comments. First, I have one from, uh, I said, uh, in a community, uh, show where they're discussing, um, they have a similar issue with us on transi, or, that's what it's called, it's, it's, and, I mean, really similar numbers. And they're, we're looking at ways to change those numbers, so they're looking at educating, why it's going to be in class, and even the teachers talking to them, and it's like, what it's like, how many in the class, and the class operate through. And changing color to American to something that's more positive, right, than a, and it's, it's really interesting, so they're, they're piloting, they took feedback from eight students, the teachers and the parents and administration, right, and they've set a pilot program, so they're not, which is going to help us, but, and they're looking to maybe send their operations, and something to more, it's, it's. Sorry, so I wanted to share, because I thought, it was, you know, it was neat, like a collaboration, everyone coming together, and, and, okay.
It's timely, we're actually, we need tomorrow to talk about that.
Yeah.
I mean, myself, it's just not, it's cool, so.
Yes, um, went to the Exciting Language Order Success, uh, event, um, at the Mark Twenty, honored, it was quite the place, I mean, that was, they were honoring generosity and it was lovely. Um, it was actually a very nice event, and, and I think she appreciated it, quite a few folks showed up, so that was good. Um, I also accidentally, lovely, wandered into the pier court at, um, Thurston, I was taking roasted beats to go in. But, but I, I was going across the field and Michelle was standing out there, and she's already coming to pier court, and I was like, well, no, but you want me to? And she said, well, you know, if you get a chance, I went in there, oh my gosh, it, it was probably one of the most amazing things I have seen. Um, primarily because our kids are so well-spoken, the real, you know, because it's, it's crime, right, it's real.
It's real.
But the real crime is the fact that the kids that were on trial haven't had even half the opportunities that our kids have, the, the vocabulary, the ability to pose questions. Um, it, it was, it was mind-boggling and really, really, really moving to see and to realize that the, the crime is the education, it's not the kid. And, and it was, anyway, I, I think, when they do it again, um, you know, I, I, I would ask Michelle, because I, it was literally serendipitous that I wandered in and I would just, just so, other, and you just stand in the back, you know, like, you know, it's, it was, it was incredible. Also, just want to thank probably Cindy and, um, Cindy Kimmel and, and Chris Coste for the work they do, I think it is so vital and so important for our kids, so I just want that out there. And then, um, I would ask you, Jason, to, um, I think Mr. Hill's had some inaccurate information in his comments, um, about the dollars he spent reserving money and that's, yeah, if you could just, um, correct that, I would be really appreciative. Thank you.
I, I was moved and just grateful for the staff that we have and our community, all the people that are stepping up to help our students. Um, I also went to the, um, principal survey thing to keep, keep Jason and Lisa company.
People, yeah, there are two people.
But they brought up what you brought up, Carol, that was one of their items, was the absence, absences insurance.
Okay, we'll try. Um, I appreciate hearing about the award that Elmoreau got for their, um, resources for the kitchen, that was, um, nice, really nice for them, I know they work hard. And some of our staff there work at the boys' lacrosse in summer, so, but they're very, they're diligent. I stopped in the, um, Community Wellness Resource Fair, uh, because I'd been, I was going to go anyway, but I went to the D-LIFE meeting, and Melissa was quite concerned that I wouldn't come. And it was, she, they put a lot of work into that, they had a lot of, a lot of displays there, a lot of information, it was really, really nice for the parents, because there was a, a lot, there are a lot of resources, but as a parent, it's not so easy to find out what those are. So we bring it here and, and as, um, there's a lot of, um, Spanish speakers that can relate the information to the, the parents that moved it out. Uh, the, I had already shared with Jason at the D-LIFE meeting, parents were really concerned with our residency verification, and Yadi, Yadi didn't ask me to bring that, that forward, but she has worked really hard to convince them, they really feel that it's hard to scan. And, um, so she's, she's working really hard to, and I kept, and I told her, no, it's everyone, it's everyone in the history, but because it's a new program, and some of, some of them have been here for a long time, but there's just such a, such a, a tint of emotional aspect to that right now in our, her, her, that, that, boy, that discussion got really lively. And she was quickly translating a lot for me since I go, especially when they speak fast, when they're really passionate, but it would, and then they, then when I, I left, because I was going down to see the arts, the banners down at the art, uh, gallery downtown, they were getting ready to do a presentation for the parents on the dashboard, while Yadi and Marissa were saying, okay, there, I said, well, it's pretty, pretty complicated, because, you know, they were gonna take, tackle that with those parents. Um, I also stopped in at, when, um, then, Banditini, is that who you said was his name?
Banditini.
And.
Bandatini.
Bandatini, and it was the one that did, and Sarah, the language, um, speech therapist, speaking to them, she was so high-energy, but I really liked it because she was really, it was seeing how important it is to pick up the book, pick up the book and read to your kids, and she said, you know, that, don't, just give them the tablet. And she was really explaining to, uh, parents that were there of the, if you give your child a tablet and they read the book with that, that you don't have any chance to interact with them and know what they're thinking. And that that way that they learn communication and inclusive vocabulary is to read that interaction about the story, and she was, that you don't just read the story, it was great, it was really, really a great presentation. Sarah also told me how many words in it, and Lucy's previous one, and we have. So, our grant lets us do that thing for primarily preschool parents, and they're really, really great programs, so she's, and she works really hard at that. Um, the other, only thing is, uh, when I see these, the people that are retired tonight, or, you know, the last few years, these are like really living the families, they live in, they were able to live in this community, they raised their kids here, their kids went to school. So there's so much interconnection, which is one of the reasons that I have always been so supportive of allowing our staff to bring their kids to school, I just think that that, it, it, it's harder, I think, when they don't actually live in town. But the commitment to do that, to bring your children here and have them be involved in our community, then gives you that kind of tie-in, that familiarity, it just gives that to the roots, right? And it just drives that point home, I just think it's, I think it's invaluable. So, and then the other, you come down to student paper, student paper, and I was picking and asking Jason that question to make sure that, that is really, um, those students really put themselves out there. But knowing that they did, um, have a lot of counseling, and it's, contacted the school psychologists before they took that step, that what it, what Jason pointed out to me is that then it's that really attempt to start to do more than removal of stigma, to really get out there and so that they are.
It's really brave.
It's brave, but it also really helps everybody else, uh, so that we move away from that point.
And start conversations.
Right, yeah, that's exactly. And I think our students, you know, are probably already there for that, and students in some of the districts, because of the, what we've been doing for years with Character Council and Rachel's Challenge, and, but it's, it's, it was, they're very brave. Thank you. Our next meeting, it will be Tuesday, June thirteenth, here in the boardroom at six P M, and I can move to German. All in favor?